Recording has started.
Thank you. All right, I hereby call the December one twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting to order at six P M. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glenn.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Zagerodney.
Here.
Commissioner Skoggin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Approval of agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Any objections to approving the agenda as written? All right, seeing and hearing none, the agenda is approved. Pledge of allegiance with Commissioner Skoggin. Please pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Consent agenda minutes, regular meeting minutes, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Introduction for public hearing quasi judicial matters, none. Introduction for public hearing legislative matters. Resolution twenty five dash twenty three, a resolution of the Matanus Kasasitna Borough Planning Commission recommending assembly adoption of the Matanus Kasasitna Borough Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty six update. Public hearing date, December fifteenth, twenty twenty five, staff. Tony, Tony Booth, I'm sorry, that was a typo, current planner. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Committee reports, none. Agency staff reports, none. Land use classifications, none. Audience participation. Caleb, do we have anyone on the phone? No one on the phone? Okay. It looked like there's anyone in person or on the phone. Seeing and hearing that there are no other persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing audience participation? No objections? Audience participation is closed. Public hearing quasi judicial matters, none. Public hearing legislative matters, resolution twenty five dash twenty four. A resolution of the Matanus Kasasitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending M S B seventeen dot fifty nine Lake Management Plan Implementation to update definitions related to motorized and personal watercraft. Staff Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. Mr. Strawn, please provide your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the ability to speak to this and if I hope I articulate this correctly and if there's any questions after I talk, please feel free to ask until the issue is completely understood. So seventeen fifty nine, which regulates lake management plans, has a couple of definitions that one is for motorized watercraft and another is for personal use watercraft. And there are there are the different lakes in the in the code either prohibit or have time restrictions for these different types of uses. And some of the lakes have a explicit prohibition of personal use watercraft and others don't. And there are some lakes that have prohibitions on motorized watercraft but don't specifically prohibit personal watercraft. And when we're talking personal watercraft, we're talking ski doos and jet skis and things like that. So in twenty twenty two, Morroville Lake was one of these lakes that had a had restrictions on motorized watercraft, but it did not have a specific prohibition on personal use watercraft. And so the question was asked of me to make an official determination as to whether personal use watercraft are indeed restricted on that lake as well. And so I wrote up a four-page determination essentially saying that personal use watercraft are a type of motorized watercraft, that if you have a restriction on horsepower of motorized watercraft, that also applies to personal use watercraft. And that decision was overturned by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Their opinion was that personal use watercraft is not a type of motorized watercraft, that indeed the definitions are different. So rather than appeal that decision and to Superior Court, it was decided that we would just change the definitions within code to make it crystal clear that indeed personal use watercraft are a type of motorized watercraft. And, you know, I guess I will say if you were to apply the logic that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals applied, then there are lakes that have a complete prohibition on motorized watercraft, saying that you can only have electric motors. And but they don't specifically prohibit personal use watercraft. So in theory, you could just be, if you applied their interpretation of the code, you could be ripping around on a jet ski all day long, even though the the code says that they're only allowed electric motors. So I don't think that they landed in the right spot. And this is our attempt to fix the definitions, just make it crystal clear for our code compliance staff.
All right, Commissioner, do you have any questions for Mr. Strawn? Any questions at all about the proposal? Yes, sir.
I, um, so how, say I just, I'm just gonna go out and go to a lake, some random lake in La Cilla or the whole Massoue Borough. How do I know what I can and can't do? There's like every lake has a different set of rules made up by the people that live on that lake. So it doesn't necessarily, you know, I mean, there's no way, how do we know?
Yeah.
Breaking the law.
Yeah, so for for lakes that have restrictions on them, we we try to have the restrictions posted at any public boat launch. That's that's something we try to do on all the lakes that have these types of restrictions.
Once again, the rules that were made up by the people that live on that lake, not the Massoue Borough, right?
So, no, these are, these are rules that would be adopted by the Assembly.
They'll be adopted by the Assembly, but but each lake has its own management plan that applies and they add these rules as they see fit to each one of these lakes. The group of people that lives around that lake is how a lake management plan works, my understanding.
Yeah, so we've been through the lake management process a couple of times. Yeah, I mean, the the community gets together and decides what type of restrictions they want.
The community meaning the people that live on that lake, only the people that
Yeah.
have property on that lake.
Yeah. And, you know, I I don't think, you know, this is not, I mean, that's kind of a discussion for seventeen fifty nine as a whole in general, and we do have legislation coming up that will modify the process and and rules required for establishing lake management plans. This is really a clarifying ordinance that just, yeah.
Do you feel that this is ahead of, like, I think clarifying or revisit the entire, this is, I mean, it's, it's on there now, but it's like, I feel like this is ahead of, like, I think, I feel like this is, we should probably wait on this in general. I mean, we could throw it forward, but it's still, the lake management plan, it's not a, it needs a lot of work and this is just barely scraping the surface of it. I don't know if it's, we're just kind of, I think it's a waste of time, this particular amendment. But anyway, I just want to have a couple of questions there.
Yeah. So I mean, I, if I may, so, so, you know, there is a more comprehensive revamp of lake management plan process coming up. Whether or not that passes, this definition still should be updated to to be clear what a personal water, personal use watercraft is, regardless of whether that gets adopted or not, or, yeah.
Just another question here. So I get like they may not want a ski boat ripping around there with somebody behind it. But how does that really, even the noise level of a jet ski not be motorized and be okay? Just because of size makes it personalized? A guy in a rowboat, would that be like, I mean, how is that motor, no motor, electric motor, horsepower? Because jet ski is going to be pretty powerful and they rip around Wausau Lake, get a pretty good clip and they're every bit as loud as a ski boat. And if you live on Wausau Lake and they come close to the shore, they might be for an instant as loud as an airplane taking off. You know, like, so what's the, how did you go, hmm, that's personal and it's okay, that's motorized and it's not?
Not you, but.
Yeah. So so when lake management plans are formed, you know, it's a, it's the lake owners that get together and talk about these things. I guess, I think reoccurring theme is, is people often think that the personal watercraft, which is motorized water, you know, known as jet skis, wave runners, or similar acrobatic stunt equipment, there is concern that it's not just noise, it's safety, it's erosion of the shoreline, it's, you know, and the way people ride them are maybe different than than boats. But for whatever reason, when seventeen fifty nine is adopted, that it was decided that there would be two different definitions of one for motorized watercraft and one for personal use watercraft. So why those were originally distinguished, I don't know the answer to that.
But I agree with Commissioner Skog, this is Commissioner Carpenter, sorry. Commissioner Skog is like, we, we get a lot of people in the summer coming out from Anchorage or other places to the borough and can't do this, can't do this, can't do this. The confusion is obviously there. And so like, how do, like, I, I'm stuck. I agree with him, like, what? Okay, I guess that's not a question. I just.
And, yeah, I agree with with both of those guys. I would like to make a motion that we not do this at this time and we wait until the actual management plan comes out. And, you know, we got to remember, because you just slipped up and said something, Alex, and I'm not crucifying you, but you said the lake owners are making the decisions. I heard you say that. And those are not the lake owners. Everybody in this room owns every one of these lakes over here, right? This lady next to me, she owns part of those lakes, I own part, he owns part, right? So I'd like to make a motion that we not do this at this time.
I'll second that.
Well, that's, yeah.
Where's that? We don't do that.
Yeah, that's, that works. Yeah. And I, I'd like to, I mean, maybe cool the temperature down a little bit on this. I, as you know, I mean, I'm as opposed to the lake management plan as anybody here. And I have been consistently about it the whole time. But that's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is right now, there's a silly definition of what a jet ski is or what a personal watercraft is. And he's trying to just clean up basic language so that it's not ambiguous. Whether or not we, you know, there's a total rewrite of the whole like management water, you know, the whole plan or the whole process for the plan, all that kind of stuff. Either way, if there's any kind of plan, you got to have a, a definition of a personal watercraft that makes sense to the common person. In terms of issues about what notice people have in terms of what what lakes, what things are available, I agree, that's probably an issue. But you know what? I think that's going to become less and less of an issue because I bet if I put in chat G B T right now, any lake around here, it would tell me exactly what the breakdown is. So, you know, there's going to, you know, notice and stuff is, that's going to get easier and easier. So I don't know, I just feel like this is a pretty simple administrative task that they're asking, the staff is asking us to do. I don't see it as that controversial. But if we want to discuss it more and we feel like we need to table it, we can. But I just kind of wanted to bring, you know, bring that perspective. I'm, we're still having a, we're still having a discussion about the question. So I'll do that. I'll do, I'll do that when I'm ready. I understand.
You're not due discussion yet. This is time for questioning of staff and then public hearing and then you can move on to that.
Exactly. And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to clarify some of the questions that were made, or some of the answers that were given and just discuss that more. Okay, so now, after that, to make sure that I understood what everybody is asking, we will go ahead and open it for public hearing. I did hear some, did I hear the phone? Okay. How many folks do we have, Caleb? Just one? Okay. All right. So at this point, audience participation, the person on the phone is permitted three minutes. So we need to, really need to dial, where's that part? Oh, press star three, please.
Oh, all right. I think I'm talking. Yes, no?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Okay. I believe the borough, I have property on a private lake.
Sorry, sorry. Please state and spell your last name for the record.
Yes. Calandri, C A L A N D R I. Thank you, everybody. I thought the borough had a spot where you could search what the lake management plans are for each individual lake. I have property that's on a private lake and we quickly created a lake management plan years ago because a builder was going to develop a forty acre parcel and make one little spot touch the lake and it's only twenty five acre lake. And it would have been too small. But I guess what I'm going as, what the person asking is more of just a housekeeping, I think, versus changing lake management plan. It's just a verbiage and clarification, housekeeping is what I kind of consider it. That was my two cents. Thank you for everybody's time.
Thank you, sir. Caleb, do you have anybody else? Right. No one else in the audience? Okay. All right, now I will close the public hearing. And Mr. Strawn, would you like to respond to any of the public comments?
No, I apologize for the slip up on the lake owners thing. And I would agree that this is, this is housecleaning.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins, question, can you give us what the current, just for the sake of trying to search what the ideal definition is of personal watercraft is per borough definition?
So right now, personal watercraft means vehicles known as jet skis, wave runners, and similar acrobatic or stunt equipment. And I would say even more pertinent is the definition of motorized watercraft use. So in my determination, I determine that personal watercraft are a type of motorized watercraft. And currently in definition is motorized watercraft use means the operation of watercraft powered or propelled by a force other than human muscular power, gravity, or wind. This definition does not include airplanes as motorized watercraft and landing, taking off, or taxiing on a water body.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Any other questions or anything?
Yeah, Commissioner Glenn, so they.
I just, I just didn't know if you had a follow up question or anything. No, no, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So at this time, can I, I'll entertain a motion for resolution twenty five dash twenty four.
I'll move twenty five dash twenty four.
Thank you very much. Could I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
All right. So Commissioner McCabe moves the motion. And I'm sorry, did you second or who did second? Doug, Doug Glenn did? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glenn seconded it. All right, now we'll open up your discussion, folks. Any discussion? Commissioner Glenn.
Yeah. So this is for Alex. The, so the float planes can come and go. We can't regulate them, even though when they're on the water, if they are a float plane, they are basically a boat. I don't know what the heck we're doing here. I'm at a loss on all this. I mean, they make more noise than anything. I'm an airplane guy, obviously. And I don't know. I'm at a complete loss on all this. So, so what are we doing? I mean, Anderson Lake's got piles of airplanes taking off, Wolf Lake's got piles of planes taking off, you know, Shirley Lake, and it just goes on and on and Wolf Lake. And so, and if that, basically people are worrying about noise. Does that seem to be the main topic here, I guess?
Yeah. So I'm going to make a statement and if the attorney disagrees with me, I hope she'll pipe in. But I believe that local municipalities are explicitly preempted from regulating aircraft taking off and landing. So we simply cannot regulate airplanes taking off and landing on 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 lakes.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And do you know, is that by state or federal law?
Federal.
That's what I thought.
Commissioner McCabe through the chair. We have forty three lakes that have their own management plans, is that correct? Since the one that we, we dealt with a couple months or so ago. And I'm wondering, does this apply to just those lakes with management plans? Or what are we discussing? And is this? Is this conversation arising out of complaints from people that don't like the definition of personal watercraft as opposed to motorized personal watercraft? What are we, what was the impetus for this to come about?
Yeah, so this was a, an administrative determination. So one of the functions that I do as the planning director is to interpret sections of borough code and make that appealable, that and then that decision goes to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. So there was a lake out in Houston that had restrictions on motorized watercraft, saying, I think it was like a twenty five horsepower limit. But it didn't explicitly prohibit personal use watercraft, meaning ski doos or wave runners or whatever. And the question was asked, are we allowed to ride personal use watercraft? Because it's not expressly prohibited. I did my analysis, it's a four page analysis, and said, I believe that personal use watercraft are a type of motorized watercraft, and therefore they're subject to a twenty five horsepower limit. And that decision was appealed and a Board of Adjustments and Appeals determined that personal use watercraft are not a type of motorized watercraft. And and so therefore, personal use watercraft can just let her rip. And I, I don't think it was a good decision. But at the time, we decided to not appeal it and have M S B versus M S B go to court and rather to simply put forward a code change that would make it very clear that that personal use watercraft are a type of motorized watercraft.
I'm starting, this, Commissioner Allen, so was the legal reasoning there, though, that because you had two subsections, one for motorized vehicles and one for personal watercraft, if you had wanted it to say motorized personal watercraft, you could have done that in a separate section. So that they read those two sections and then they erred on the side of the, of the people with the watercrafts, right? I mean, the ambiguity went on their side, right? Isn't that basically how that went down?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that kind of stuff happens all the time, especially when you hobble together statutes as, as things happen and.
Over decades.
Yes, exactly. I mean, that, that, that kind of statutory ambiguity is pretty common stuff.
Yeah.
And sometimes legislative bodies got to go through and clean that stuff up, right?
Commissioner Skog, I have, I mean, I understand what you're doing and we're not going to change the world tonight. But I do have one question. How do personalized hard watercraft, snow machines fall into this, lake management plans? I don't believe that's ever came up.
Yeah, so there is, in seventeen fifty nine, let me go to it, let's go beyond the screen here, the very end. There's a section on winter motor vehicle control. And there's a list of lakes that say motor vehicles are prohibited from the surface of the falling lakes when ice covered. And it has eight lakes that prevent snow machines from crossing. Good luck with that. But that is.
Wolf Lake is a. It's a good question, Commissioner. I, I had no idea that there were lakes that restricted snow machines.
But I would.
Never heard of that.
My opinion is that snow machines are not watercraft. But I haven't done that analysis in depth. But I mean, I know people can do it, but.
You know, when you're talking about cleaning things up, I just, once again, I think everybody has a feel for how I, how I, how I feel about the like management plans in general, just being a public piece of property and a small group managing it. But it just like, it just seems like it just can, just can keep, it just, I understand what you're trying to hear. Just, I guess we just, it's easy to get, there's a bigger problem out there, I guess. Cleaning this little bit up, that's one thing, but there's a lot more to it, I think, than that. So, okay, that's, I'm just curious. Thanks.
Through the chair, Commissioner Collins, it sounds, I don't know, maybe going a little too forward here, but it seems like we're, we're tiptoeing this or or there's energy coming towards this because it seems like maybe there are potentials of, all right, we're redefining things, which is trying to allow certain things to be skirted, or potentially this could cause a slippery slope with other things that could be potentially coming down, down the track here. But with that being said, I think that's where, or with that being said, I think that's the kind of the hesitancy here and kind of wanting to see, okay, if we're changing a definition, all right, and then all of a sudden now we're going to have some more lake management stuff come in. Okay, you know, like, I understand to, you know, create something and build something out, you want to have pure transparent definitions so a plan can be established and therefore adhered to. I guess we're, and maybe I can try and clarify where my little bit of confusion is or hang up is, is when I hear personal use watercraft, I'm thinking kayaks, rowboats, paddle boats, you know, you know, paddle boards and things like that. When I hear personal use, when I hear you cannot use motorized watercraft on a lake, that naturally in my, just living here for twenty three years, I hear no jet skis. When I see no motorized watercraft on here, not, huh, it didn't say personalize, and this is my motor, so I'm okay. Or I can put an outboard motor on a key, or on a, on a kayak or something. You know, I don't think that's there. I think this may have. or something, you know, I don't think that's there. I think this may have, and I'm still new at this and, and learning as I go here, and so hopefully I don't trip over myself, but this may have been proposed later with as maybe a workaround for those wanting to have their own personalized watercraft on their body of water that they were potentially going towards, because at one point, there was motors, you know, boats and all that, and then it kind of got whittled down, and then this was kind of created as a workaround or loophole in, into allowing personal watercraft on the body of water. Now, to me, a blanket term of no motorized watercraft on the body of water, to me, that leaves paddleboards, things of man muscle power, or wind, or, you know, I guess you can't say solar, but you know, I, I kind of, I think that's where the hesitancy is, and then kind of where things have gone previously this year with lake management plans and things like that. I think that's the hesitancy of the Planning Commission right now. That's at least my temperature. And I feel like if we do this, or not have a very transparent understanding of what the true proposed definition is and how it would work moving forward, or how it's gonna, yeah, work moving forward, I, I feel like where this energy's coming from is that we're about to open Pandora's box here on a lot of things. So I, I, I guess I just, I have a, I have a, a problem with just if there's no motorcraft on there, then there's no motorcraft, period. Motorized, you know, watercraft on there, but this, it almost seems like this should just personalized watercraft or motorized, I just, now I'm talking in circles, and so I'm trying to get back to where I was, but anyway, I just think that's kind of the hangup here, and I, I'm kind of, I guess, dumbfounded at kind of what the purpose of personal use watercraft is. It maybe be re, not redefine, but re-titled as personalized motor watercraft? Maybe that would kind of fix things? I don't, I don't know, but I'll leave that hanging there.
Commissioner McCabe through the chair. So how many, first of all, what, what does enforcement look like at this point? What are, do you just go out and enforce it if somebody complains, or, I mean, there's lots of lakes, how are we doing this? Already, without changing any words?
Sure. So, right now, our, our most effective tool for ensuring these regulations are followed is by education. So having little flyers and signage at, at the public boat launches is our number one tool. If somebody, and this happens a couple times this summer, somebody will say, hey, somebody's out doing whatever in violation of our lake management plan, and so usually it's somebody who lives there, or whatever. If, if it's somebody just visiting, there's not much we can do about it, because by, by the time we get there, they're gone. But they'll generally have times today that they expect that they'll probably be out there riding around, and we'll go out and talk to the person if we can figure out where they, where they landed, if we can catch them or find them. You know, either it's at the boat launch, or generally they'll know where the person lives, we'll go knock on the door and say, hey, there's rules on this lake, and you know, just let them know, and usually they stop after that, yeah.
And another question. How many, do you think, how many personal motorized watercraft are there out there that are currently operating on lakes that would be affected by a change in the definition?
So I have no way of knowing that answer, but, you know, I guess my opinion is that it is clear to me already what that if, if there is a restriction on motorized uses, that it also is a restriction on personal watercraft, whether explicitly says it or not, despite this decision of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I think it was in error, I really do. This just clarifies it. But so I think that I think that we can, I, I guess, the, the question again was, how are we able to enforce this? Yeah, I mean, it's written in law, and generally, when we tell people it's illegal, they stop doing it. If you show them where the code is and, and the plan that has been adopted.
I, one of the things I just took from Commissioner McCabe's question, though, is are there people that if, if this definition is adopted as proposed, are there people that come this summer are not gonna be able to use their jet skis that did use them last summer? Or do you think that everyone is kind of under the same understanding of what a personalized motorized watercraft is?
Potentially, so I'd say that the population that is most aware of this decision by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals is the people on Morrover Lake. So if they're on jet skis in the summertime and you know, this were to get adopted, then they probably would have to stop.
Through the chair. I asked earlier, and I don't know if I got a response, there are, what, forty-three lakes with management plans? So does this only apply to the lakes with the management plans, or does it apply to all lakes in the borough?
So this, this definition applies to those forty-three lake management plans. The ones that are in seventeen fifty-nine, and most of them, or I don't know about most of them, but some of them may not have restrictions on motorized uses, so they wouldn't be affected at all. So it'll be a portion of those forty-three lakes that will be affected by this.
I have a tough time making a decision. I get, Lynn brought up a good point there. We, we, we could make a decision tonight that could keep people from using their watercraft next spring, rolling out in the water, and the, it's gone to the state supreme, what court, level of court has it gone to?
So this, this was just the Borough's Board of Adjustments and Appeals, so any decision by the Planning Commission, the, the Plating Board, or the Director
Somebody's already shot this down once, I guess, is what I'm saying, and we're, and we're being asked to kind of go against them, and I don't know if this is the right time for that, and then I don't know that it's fair to those people. I mean, I know it's not fair to those people that we make a decision on December first and they can't run their watercraft. It just, it's just kind of messy to me. I mean, I, I can't, I definitely couldn't get behind it either way, but anyway, I just wanted to, that shows a good point, though. There's, we're making decisions right now tonight that will affect who knows how many people that have there's, those are expensive, thousand-dollar jet skis, and they're sitting out there, so.
Any other
Commissioner McCabe? I don't know if this is the correct motion or not, but I would like to make a motion that we table this resolution until the water body setback proposal that is in the works comes before us, and maybe this could be part of that discussion?
Okay, procedurally, do we need to, Alex, do we need to vote this down first to do that, or do you think, or can we just entertain a separate motion?
So, I mean, if you want to kill it, it would be to postpone indefinitely, would be the appropriate terminology. Now, I've said this many times before, that if on any legislation that comes before you, the way you communicate to the Assembly is to adopt a resolution, saying what your opinion on it is. So postponing this indefinitely would, would kill this resolution, but I would recommend that you adopt something, even, you know, if it says, we don't like this ordinance, but adopt something expressing what your opinion is on the legislation.
Yeah, we can do that. It does feel, I gotta say, though, it does feel a bit like spitting in the wind. Every time we have dealt with this issue, the Assembly is diametrically opposed to our opinion on this. I mean, and, and sometimes that gets frustrating, you know, because we're, it's funny that we could be unanimous about something and they are unanimous the other direction. So anyway, you know, if we want to do a, some sort of resolution outlining why we don't think this is a good idea, or at least at this time, I'm all ears if people want to work on that. That's true. Commissioner McCabe, did you want to make an amendment to the motion, and then we could vote on that? Maybe that's a clean way to do it. To, or to the resolution, sorry. Just saying that we don't think it's properly devoted on it at this time, something like that. I'm sorry.
I'll make whatever amendment is needed to table it or postpone it until we can cover it in the what we understand is coming down the pike already.
Yeah. So so, okay, so that sounds more like a postpone till time certain would be, instead of postponing indefinitely, that would kill it, but postponing it till time certain would be to keep it alive, kind of.
I would not keep it alive. I want it to be included with whatever is coming. If it's going to be discussed, it needs to be discussed as a whole with the other lake management plan proposals that will be coming before us. So it's not up to us to decide what's in there, but we can amend whatever they present to us, right?
Yeah, okay, so, so given that, I think amending this resolution to say, you know, that this not be taken up until the, there's an ordinance, we can figure out the ordinance number, and I think it's, I don't know what the schedule is on that, that other lake management plan ordinance, but I think it's been referred to the, by the Assembly, or just was referred. But that that should be incorporated into that larger ordinance dealing with lake management plans. So I think if that's what you're trying to say, this resolution should be amended to say that, is what should happen. And, and we certainly could craft that language, and you can, and vote on that.
Can we take it, just a little recess and
We can.
Wordsmith and so at this time, I'd like to call a ten minutes? Ten-minute recess.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you folks and thanks for your patience. Um, well, we took a little 10 minute break there and Alex has, uh, written up some proposed language here. Alex, you want to go over that with us?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think I brought my B game today. Normally I would track changes on this, on this, uh, resolution, uh, but I didn't. So I, I know what changes were made and I'll read them to you. Uh, first of all, I changed the, the title to read as follows. A resolution of the Matanus Kususitina Borough Planning Commission recommending the assembly fail ordinance 25 dash 123 and incorporate the proposed changes to definitions within 1759 into ordinance 25 dash 128. And yeah, so ordinance 25 dash 128 is the, the more comprehensive overhaul of lake management plan process. And, um, and it was, it was, uh, uh, referred November 18th and will be introduced at our next meeting. So the first meeting of January is when we should have a public hearing on that. Uh, it, I also added two whereas's. So I think the, the whereas's that are in there still might apply. You might want to monkey with those in subsequent, uh, uh, changes. But I did add two at the end, um, which states whereas the proposed ordinance ensures consistency. Nope, not that one. All right, keep going. So whereas ordinance 25 dash 128 is a comprehensive overhaul of the lake management plan process and was referred to the planning commission on November 18, 2025. Whereas it is appropriate for the planning commission to consider MSB 1759 holistically instead of looking narrowly at definitions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Matanus Kususitina Borough Planning Commission hereby recommends the assembly fail ordinance 25 dash 123 and consider incorporating the definition changes within 25 dash 128.
Can you go back up to the title real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so you had a qualifier in the end. Um, consider incorporating the proposed changes to definition. I think you had that in the end and maybe that's how it should be in the title. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I, I don't want it to sound like we're necessarily adopting this definition because I'm not sure that we got that far.
Makes sense. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, any other discussion about the language, folks? Everybody comfortable with this, guys?
So I guess if the maker of the motion feels comfortable with this, then I would say, state a motion to.
It looks good to me and I make a motion that we accept the proposed changes to the resolution.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we've got a, a motion, uh, by Commissioner McCabe to, um, to make this modifications. And see, I guess we need to do, uh, um, a vote. Oh yeah, we, we got a second by Commissioner Glenn, sorry.
In discussion.
Um, any, yeah, before we have a vote, any further discussion? Further discussion, all guys? Okay. All right. Anything else?
Can just ask if there's objection.
Okay, sure. Fair enough. Uh, I don't think we do need to do a formal vote. Um, is there any objection to, uh, passing the modified version 2524, um, as written?
So I think you need to ask if there's objection to the, the amendment.
Okay.
Then you get to the main motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any objection to the amendment? All right. Then it'll pass as.
Well, now to the main motion, is there any discussion? And then objection to the main motion, which is the resolution as a whole.
So, well, that's, I guess that's where I'm a bit confused. So I thought we. As amended. Okay. All right. So now is there any objection or discussion with regard to the main motion as amended? All right. Hearing, seeing none there, then the motion passes. Okay. Well, that was a bit livelier than I expected. I think, uh, good piece of business. All right. Moving on to, um, number 11 on our agenda here, uh, correspondence and information, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Commission business, upcoming planning commission agenda items. Do any commissioners have questions about the future agenda items provided in your folder? Everyone had a chance to glance at the future agenda items in their folder? Any questions? Any comments about that? All right. Then we will move on to, uh, director and commissioner comments at this point. So, um, let's just, uh, start down here, folks. Uh, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Collins.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate everyone going through this and working together. As always, it's a pleasure and everyone drive home safe. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Doug Rodney.
Uh, no comment. Just thanks for today's meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Glenn.
Uh, no comment.
Commissioner McCabe.
No comment.
Mr. Skoggin.
Yeah, I have no comment.
And I don't believe I have, oh, um, sorry, um, Alex, anything else?
Say, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving surrounded by loved ones. And, uh, we have one more meeting before Christmas and I'll wish you all Merry Christmas then.
Thank you. And I, I second that. I hope everyone had a nice holiday. Please be safe out there. I know some of you are driving some great distances tonight, so please be careful and, uh, everyone get home safe tonight. Have a great night. Thanks.